Call this meeting to order Richie, if you've got something to read for.
I will do it. Thank you. Because of the continuation of the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being held up electronically over the Zoom platform. It is authorized by the county's continuity of government ordinance, this authority's resolution and Virginia statute. The public has real-time audiovisual access to this meeting over Zoom, real-time audio access and real-time audio access over the telephone. Everyone on the phone and attending by way of Zoom from the public is in listen-only mode. The following instructions apply to those who wish to speak during public comment. If you are listening on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature to notify the meeting facilitator. For those joining by telephone, please use star nine to indicate you would like to comment. Tell the board your full name and the magisterial district in which you reside before getting into the substance of your comment. If you don't know your magisterial district, provide a general location for your home or business. The street location or neighborhood name will suffice. Each speaker will be allowed no more than three minutes to comment. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available on the county's website. With that explanation, I will ask the board members to identify themselves and their general location, and I'll do that by a roll call. So let's see, Director Walsh.
I am here. I'm in Almaral County at my home.
Let's see, Director Jaques.
I'm here at my home in Stony Point.
Director Henry.
I am present and at my place of employment, county office building on McIntyre.
Director Fritz.
Here and I'm at home in Charlottesville.
And Supervisor Palmer.
I am at, I'm here and I am at my home in Ivy.
And Supervisor Price.
I am present and operating for my temporary office workshop in Albemarle County.
All right, Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deloria. Appreciate it. Our first order of business is to approve the agenda. I hope everyone's had an opportunity to review it. Are there any suggested changes? Or should we adopt it as it is?
I also had sent you the minutes for February 24th and March 10th, if you want to add those also.
That's on the updated agenda. You may not have seen it.
I pulled up the last one. Okay. Never mind.
Good call. Anything else? Then is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. All those in fact, let me run the list. Donna.
Hi.
Bill?
Yes.
Waldo?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. The agenda is approved. That will take us on to brief announcements from authority members. I'll just run through the list and see if you all have anything. Donna?
Nothing. Thank you.
Bill? Waldo?
No.
Liz?
No.
Trevor?
No.
And nothing from the chair as well. Excellent. Moving right along. Takes us to our public comment period. Richie lets you guys know about raising hand and all that stuff. If there are any members of the public who are participating in this meeting who would like to comment, here's the opportunity. And Mike, hopefully you can give us, or Mike, you and John can give us some help in identifying any of those folks.
I have not seen any raised hands yet, Chair.
We'll give folks just a second or two here. And thanking everyone for participating. Hope we give you an interesting meeting to attend and we'll move on then. And that'll bring us to approval of the February 24th meeting minutes, the March 10th continued meeting minutes and the March 24th meeting minutes. I trust everyone's had an opportunity to review these. Bill provided them. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Waldo gave me a whole bunch of com, minor comments and I've made those changes. Thank you for sending those.
Thanks.
I know while Bill says they were minor, Waldo, I'm sure they were vital, critical, important, and that we all agree with them, so.
They were minor in that they didn't change the substance of the.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
Chair, this is John. It looked like there was a button that was set incorrectly. So there is one hand that is raised in the public. Seth Raghastam.
Very well. We'll pick that up as soon as we finish this item. Let's, we'll stay on task here for a second and then we'll see what Mr. Raghastam has to say. Liz, did you have your hand up?
I just wanted to, I think after we approve, you can decide. I have a comment on the March 24th minutes and it's not really something to change. It's something that I think was lost in the translation a little bit. So I just thought it would be best to state it to be clear. And I can do that afterwards because I couldn't really figure out how to, I couldn't go back and listen to the meeting to get the exact words. So I didn't send it to Bill. So I don't know how, how I, if I, if I just want to state the clarification or how that's best to work.
Well, why don't you just say what it is and, you know, that way we can approve it, assuming we all agree and go on from there.
Okay. On page six of the March 24th meeting, at the very top, there's a statement that says, Ms. Price stated that providers do not have a specific distance. They will extend service, but it is typically around 600 feet. If over 600 feet, the whole distance is, is charged to the customer, not just the distance over 600 feet. This is not how it should be done. I had been asked a couple of questions in hope of getting Mike to cope, to sort of clarify that in our VADI grants specifically, I was thinking when I, when I asked the couple of questions that I asked, that he would explain that, you know, in, for instance, the Century Link one, that is not how it worked. They had a distance, I believe it was 650, and the property owners would pay over that. It was a little bit, I found it a little bit not as clear as I remembered the conversation, but I wasn't sure how to really correct that. And I'm not saying that the minutes were incorrect because all statements were correct. I just didn't think that the emphasis was where, I think we want to be clear with the public that, that our VADI grants were, were not done that way up till this date. And if that's the case, which I believe was expressed during the meeting, then tell me, I just thought it would be best just to say that publicly in this one and then it would be in the minutes for the next, the next minute meeting, just, just to make it clear to the public. And Mike is looking like I didn't explain that very well. So if I've confused you, Mike.
Mike, you've had a lot, a lot of interactions on this topic recently. Would you like to offer some insight here?
Clearly, there's a lot of confusion about the application process compared to the award itself. The end of the application process, the ISPs for VADI put in requests that indicate what is typically called a take rate. So the take rate is never the pass bys, meaning you put fiber in the ground or, you know, back in the olden days DSL, you extend DSL out to locations where it was not available or even for wireless solutions. You look at a particular take rate and you do all you can to, to make sure that you're going to meet or exceed that take rate. Sometimes when you're further into the rural areas, you run into situations, whether it's a lot of rock you have to drill through or you've got to go up a really long driveway, that, that take rate can be reduced. And if you were to bid a take rate with all of those circumstances, because there's hundreds probably of circumstances for building fiber into the rural areas, crossing a creek, going across someone's driveway, and you have to get the uneasement to, to make sure that you're not violating private property rules. There's just a litany of circumstances that could happen. So the, the program was positioned to make sure that the ISPs could bid on a take rate specific way so that the, the cost of doing the entire project wouldn't eliminate the application from consideration. So as we go forward, you know, improving the, the VADI process is something that'll happen during 2022. It's always been improving. It's just that particular concern about the litany of reasons for a specific location having additional costs for just making it past the main, main roads is, is what we're, we're working toward. Hopefully that helps answer the, the question that was posed.
In the specific case that was being discussed at the time, Mike, if I recall correctly, the 650-foot rule, as I think it stated in the minutes, is actually what the vendor was providing. First 650 feet are covered. If you're beyond 650 feet, then that's on the homeowner, the whole amount, not the six, not that beyond 650, but the whole distance inclusive of, of that for a 650. Am I correct in saying that?
I don't know the answer to that specific question. I think that may also be on a case-by-case basis.
Well, there we go. That's as much clarity as I think we can bring. Does this question inform the topic enough that we can move on?
I think so, but I guess I had a different impression than, than you did, Bucky. I thought that what they had said was they were covering the first 650. But if I'm wrong about that, then, then I need to be corrected. And we can find that out at a latter time.
Okay. So back to the motion to, to look at these questions. Is there, is there a motion to approve the minutes, the three sets of minutes? Or are there any other comments on them?
That we approve the minute subject to Waldo's comments and Liz's discussion and look forward to the discussion of this in future minutes.
Second.
Let me run through the list. Donna?
Hi.
Bill?
Yes.
Waldo?
Yes.
Liz?
Trevor?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. The, these three sets of minutes are approved as provided for with the additional comments from Waldo and clarification on the topic Liz brought up. Which takes us back to Mr. Raghasta, who was here for a minute and went away.
Hello, can I be?
There. We can hear you.
It's been bopping me on and off of the option to speak. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and, and the board. I spoke last meeting and kind of gave you a synopsis of an issue that had developed for myself and my neighbors in the Ivy Vista neighborhood. And this is the area between, it's off Dickwoods Road near the, what's called the Box Holly and Taylor's Gap section of the area to be developed. We, we were cut out of the VADI grant program because of the way the federal grants landed in our neighborhood. And I'm hoping Mike will be able to, or you'll be able to look later on at some of the detail that he shared with me. You can, you can come down to a very nitty-gritty detail and you'll see that some of our, it's lot by lot almost that our neighborhood was divided up and left out of the VADI funds. The issue being that Century Link is present with fiber at Taylor's Gap and ready to move down the line pretty easily and pretty naturally. It's also already serving us with DSL and copper service. And we were instead given to Firefly as part of their federal award. Firefly does not serve us. And as far as I know, there are no particularly reasonable or easy lines for Firefly to get to us, particularly when we're kind of Balkanized up in these very strange, sometimes house-by-house selections. And I have developed a great deal more understanding of how and why this happened. Mike and, and some of the folks that he works with in the IT department have been hugely helpful and I really appreciate their time. And so our neighbors and I, through those conversations, have realized, and I think we're in agreement with Mike, although he can speak for himself, our only real option of success and likely development in any real timeframe is going to be by working together with the county and Century Link and hopefully Firefly as well to make our houses part of the Century Link project that's reaching out to the rest of our neighbors, sometimes our next-door neighbors. And, and we are asking for your help. Mike is very much, I know, already on board with that and I know he'll be helpful, but I'd like the board to be paying particular attention to this. And I'd like the board to take a look at the way that we were Balkanized because I think it's ridiculous and I think it's somewhat insane. And I blame largely the federal government for the way that happened. There was a comment, I think by the board chairman last time that, you know, some things had to be sacrificed to get it done for everybody. And I certainly appreciate that. But I think if you take a look at these efficiencies and what happened, you'll realize something really strange happened here. It's also clear to me that there are other neighborhoods with similar, if not greater, problems. And so paying attention to what's happening with us may help in dealing with it for the others and certainly for avoiding this down the line. I think most importantly, speaking out when, when this became an issue, which I tried to do and was told by the state VADI director that I needed to wait for the federal process to resolve itself first and then found out by waiting for the federal process to resolve itself first, I had gotten sat out for dealing anything about it. And so I think, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but you've exceeded your three-minute allotted time.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I hear your concerns. We are going to take up an issue later this evening with the folks from Firefly who are on this call that may help address this in a, in a different way than perhaps what you envisioned. But, but certainly going forward and looking at this with Century Link, since they're right there, there may be an opportunity to partner there too. And we will definitely look at these maps as you have suggested. We're a little limited in what we can do within the state body rules, but the good news on those is, is that they're constantly reconsidering what they're doing in that regard. And we look forward to having things not be so disjointed and disruptive on that regard in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Bucky, do you have a sense of the real quick?
Sure, Waldo.
I mentioned this last week, but I think it bears repeating for, for, for folks who, who don't know this, that the way that this funding works is that we can propose to the state that we'd like state funding for a particular area, but that can be superseded at any time by the federal government saying, oh, we're actually going to fund part of that area and we're no longer allowed to fund that spot. And the reason that's important is because what the work that we get funded under the state program is done within a year and the work that's funded by the federal government has up to eight years to be done. And so it's not really desirable to be an area that the federal government has declared. We have no authority or power to do anything about that. All we can do is accede to that as we may not use state funding for anything being covered by federal government. Sorry to those of you all have heard me say that before, but I want us all on the same page.
Well, Mr. Chair, could I just, I'm just sorry, I know I'm over my time, but that, that point is interesting because I think it's a reverse issue. The issue is the state rules, not the federal rules, because the state rules could have provided money even if the Fed did something.
We understand the issue.
Yeah. What's that?
We understand the issue.
Okay. I just want, because when we talk about being superseded and we don't have anything to do, that's not quite correct and I feel like our community lost out to that sensibility. So I'm sorry. I've exceeded my time. Thank you.
Thank you. When I, I'm sorry, when I say we, I mean the Admiral Broadband Authority. Like we're, we're at the limits of our, our authority.
Anyway. Moving right along to the old business, the VADI 2020 and 2021 updates. Mike, do we have anything new there?
Yes. Oh, thank you, Chair, and thanks for all the public comment. We're going to move on and talk about 2020, which is the current VADI project, which is going on in multiple areas in the county, eight areas total. Just to give you, we've got a recent update. We're, we're doing bi-weekly updates to the community. So an email goes out and one will go out tomorrow with these most recent updates. And fortunately, four out of the eight are launched and taking orders. So customers for Century Link Fiber are now placing orders. And those four are Buffalo Hills, Coles, Rolling Road, Hatton and Keene. So three in the southern area and one in the northern area. So all of those have launched and are now taking orders. So that, those are moving on at good speed. So thank you for that. The other four, the eight, four out of eight, Scottsville Road. The update is that orders will be able to be taken starting this week. So the contact center for Century Link will be contacting people along Scottsville Road. Hopefully this week, estimated this week, to have them start placing their orders. Next will be Howardsville. Howardsville, it's estimated that people will be able to start placing orders for that project May 7th. Next is Green Creek Road and that is tentatively scheduled for May 11th. And then finally, back in the northern part of the section of the county, Watts Passage with orders being taken on May 14th. So it's a lot of activity going on. We've had a couple of incidents that have been addressed by Century Link. One that happened this weekend, just trying to get people to report. It's great. I thank the community when they report issues. It helps, it helps identify those and Century Link has been relatively good at going out and, and making sure that they're taking care of the issues as they come up. So things are going well with 2020. The, the delay, you know, is, is not favorable. I mean, obviously, all of these folks were hoping for a March timeframe, but we are, we are moving ahead and DHCD gave Century Link until June 5th and they're going to exceed that deadline. So we're, we're moving on there. Any questions about 2020 before I move to 2021, meaning VADI 2021?
Yes. I have one. I'm pretty sure that the quarries is part of Green Creek Road. Is that correct? They're going to be on that May 11th?
That is correct. Yes, I do have the answer to that question. I will try to get the 650 feet. I, I, I want to say 650 feet is included in the quotes, but again, it's probably on a case-by-case basis. So thank you. Thank you Supervisor Palmer.
Okay, thank you.
And 2021, Mike?
2021, lots of activity there. It's taking a lot of time from multiple people, DHCD and myself and Century Link included. There's just a number of things from a paperwork perspective that DHCD expects us to do. So we're updating project plans, updating our passing forms, updated maps, those types of things DHCD has to go through and approve and verify. They open, this is the first time this has happened for me. They opened up CAMS for me to go back in and adjust the original application. So all the way back into last summer when we submitted the application. So.
Would you clarify for everyone what CAMS is?
Oh, CAMS is the automated system for putting in grant applications through DHCD. So thank you, Chair, for that clarification. So a lot of work going on there. That's on the DHCD side. We're also working as a team to come up with a better agreement for Century Link going forward. We've learned a lot through prior VADI projects and we're taking those learnings and putting them forward into a new agreement with Century Link, some of, some of which they've already seen and will be talking with us soon about how we're going to make the new agreement with Century Link much better than prior agreements. So that, we hope to have a full update that is positive at the May ABBA meeting. So giving ourselves until the, the end of May to get all of that work done for VADI 2021. And that's all I have on the VADI programs that are underway.
Thank you very much, Mike. Mr. Treasurer, I think our next item is our financial report.
Easy update. There are no changes from our last month's report. No, no invoices received yet. And I don't have any other updates. Then no changes. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Don't be sorry. That brings us to new business. And I'd like to welcome formally at this time our guests from Century Link, from CVC, CVSI and Firefly. We've got Gary Wood, Dennis Reese, Melissa Gay, Galen Creekmore. Did I miss anybody? Okay. Who wants the, well, first off, let's, let me introduce the topic. We circulated a memorandum of understanding to the broadband authority at our last meeting and had a brief discussion about it where we're looking for CB, EC, Rappahannock Electric and Dominion are going to get together and run a bunch of fiber. Well, Dominion will run a bunch of fiber as far as we're concerned, not so much Rappahannock. And CVC would have the opportunity to service that fiber that's in the Dominion backbone structure and actually offer services to folks in our county. And the, this memorandum of understanding covers the period where we look at, actually, you know, what's that going to entail with the engineering of that would be, what the economics are going to, that going to be and what kind of future agreement the parties would want to enter into to, to make that happen. And so with that introductory, Gary, let me turn it over to you to, to take it away and with your team and pursue that from there.
All right. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you all. We think that tonight might work a little better because you're somewhat familiar with the, the proposal and the memorandum of understanding. We have a presentation we can go through, but I prefer to do this more as a discussion topic and a question and answer. We have a couple of points we'd like to make to start the discussion and then we'll be glad to answer any questions. And we brought our team of experts so that when I get in trouble, they can bail me out. If I can do a quick screen share, I'm going to show you, if I can find it. Give me just a second. Maybe I'm not going to do a screen share right now. Let me, let me find my PowerPoint that I thought I had up just a minute ago. And I'm going to show you the electric service territories. Okay, now I've got it. In Almaral County. So this was actually part of this presentation. Again, we won't go through the entire presentation, but this slide is the important one and hopefully you'll, you'll be able to see it on your screen. On the left is just the, the different colors for the different power suppliers in Almaral County. CVC kind of in that reddish, putty-looking color. Dominion in the blue. Along the north, there's some Rappahannock territory in the yellow and then the green AEP territory. Over to the right, you'll see overlaid on that are some darkened polygons. And those are the areas that were identified in the recent FCC ARDOF auction, the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund auction. Those areas in the auction were either won by Firefly and we will provide service in those areas or they were won by Space Exploration, SpaceX and the Elon Musk and the satellite service. The VADI program in their draft guidelines for this year, and I expect it to remain in the final guidelines, they are not recognizing any satellite delivery as being served. So VADI funds are available in all of the space exploration areas and that's a little bit on the western side of the ridge here that runs along the eastern border of the county and a few other areas up here, the very western portion as you go up to the mountain here, I think that's Brown's Gap and a few other little areas here. And a few other little areas here, a little closer into town, just south of 53. Those little areas were won by SpaceX, but funding's available in all of those areas. They're considered unserved and BODY will consider them. We've worked with Dominion and Rappahannock to put together a plan to provide a proposal for universal service in the unserved areas of both of their service areas. And today, we want to tell you that we're going to cover the AEP area as well. And with that, we really don't have a partnership with AEP and that they're providing a lot of benefit other than they have agreed to give us priority in doing make ready work and trying to coordinate any system improvements that would provide some pole change outs and, and lower our cost of make ready. So they're going to do a little work with us, but we want to include that as part of this plan that we're going to put together this summer. It'll be part of the regional plan that we intend to take to BODY for funding on the Firefly side, and that Dominion will take to the State Corporation Commission to get approval for their construction in their service area of the backbone fiber that they will lease to us. So it'll really look like three different little projects in the Rappahannock area. We will be in charge of the construction. Rappahannock will pay for it. Rappahannock will own the fiber on their poles, but lease it to Firefly. It'll be Firefly Retail Service. In the Dominion area, they'll build the backbone and the major laterals. They'll have fiber that they build. They'll come down every third or fourth pole and give us access. We can run service drops from there to homes, or we can take off and build further laterals to the sides, side roads and, and areas to make sure we complete all of those areas. And then in the AEP area, we'll look like a typical telecom provider. We'll pay them to do make ready, and they'll let us know when the poles are clear. We'll build in the telecommunications space and provide service on their poles. So the intent is to cover, to identify this summer, every unserved location in the county. And then to serve as far as practical, and I'll, I'll get back to that in just a minute, to provide universal service to all of those areas. I did have the chance to talk with Evan Feynman, Kyle Rosner from the Governor's Office, and the folks at DHCD last Friday, and ask a couple of questions. One that I asked was if they would accept the fact that universal service could leave a few places unserved. And I'm going to pick on, there's a little area right at the Blue Ridge Parkway up here in Northwest Albemarle. It's about a three mile fiber construction to pick up three or four buildings that are on the parkway. That's just, it's a, it's a very expensive extension for a fairly small number. And the, the state staff agreed, in fact, they used a 97% guideline. I think we'll be well above 97%. We may be at 99.5%, but there may be a few individual locations there that we leave up to SpaceX to, to pick up. Other than that, we intend to, to be on Dominion lines or on Rappahannock lines or on our own lines on AEP. That, along with the build out that we'll be completing over the next year, should provide universal service to the unserved areas of Albemarle. So that's what our goal is. This summer, we do the study and identify those areas. And, and then we come back to the county, tell you what it's going to cost for this project, tell you what sources of funding we see. Right now, BADI is the, the easiest one to see. And then talk about what type of county contribution might make us most likely to win the BADI grant. And of course, we'll work with the county staff to help define the, the unserved areas and then to come up with that plan for funding. And we're pretty transparent. We'll show you what portion of the capital infrastructure we can pay for from our rates. I can tell you today that in general, for every connected account, we have about $25 a month that we can use for capital to, to offset or, or pay for the debt service of the capital investment. And if you run that through, that's about $5,000 investment for every connected service. So you look at how many passings you have, you look at what your estimated take rate is, and you can come up with how much Firefly can afford to invest. And, and then from that, we come up with the, the grant needs. So that was a lot of high level, quick information. But we intend to do that study if you sign on to the MOU and come back to you. Our goal is to have that back in August because we will need your approval in time for a September, I think it's September the 16th is the BADI application deadline. Mike, is that correct? Do you remember?
Yes, sir, Gary, it's the 14th, September 14th. Yes, sir.
All right.
Yep.
All right, so that, we will need to be back to the county in time for the county to make a decision and whether to go forward and, and apply for the BADI grant. We will be working on the BADI application, obviously, with the information of the study throughout the summer. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have or have our team answer some questions.
You put it to the board, then. You all have questions?
So many. So the idea here is not to, not to overbuild. That is not to provide service where broadband is already available. How, how will broadband be defined for that purpose? How fast is a connection where you're not going to build there? Is that your values?
Well, and let me clarify a little bit. The way we build on the power lines, the nature of building on power lines means there will be some overbuilding. Because to build from the substation out, we have, may have to build through a served area to get to an unserved area. We won't intentionally build into a served area, and we can't use grant funding to build in a served area. The grant, this year, BODY is still using 25.3, at least in their draft guidelines. I don't look for that to change. But we will be covering, well, I've told AEP, assume we're going to be on every AEP pole in Albemarle County. So you can see, or you may have seen, it's a fairly splotchy coverage down there, but we'll essentially be on every pole that AEP is going to be on in the county. With Dominion, they have some routes they've looked at that run through some served areas to get to unserved areas. And so we will be in a few served areas. The goal for this project is to make sure we get all the unserved areas, but then we'll be very close by where we can extend service. As soon as the, the definition of the, the speed that they use to define it goes up, we'll be ready to expand into those areas.
So I, I got a little bit confused through your, through your explanation. I just want to make sure I understand. Are you trying to get basically with the BADI grant, all of the areas that are not served by CIVIC now or about to be served, not CIVIC customers, and basically everybody else that meets the definition of unserved? So are we going for the whole county? Okay, all right. That's, that's really good. Could you also explain, are there any other state laws that need to be changed for you to go through and do this work at this point? I get a little bit confused on what's happened and what needs to happen in order for everybody to get served with the 25.3?
There are no state laws that need to be changed. That's the short answer. No laws that need to be changed.
Everything's been done with respect to you working with Dominion and all that, so, okay.
That is correct. There is a, an approval process for the Dominion construction where they have to take their proposed project to the State Corporation Commission because the State Corporation Commission reviews their building area to make sure it's serving unserved areas. So there's an approval process that goes through the FCC, but it's not a state law change or anything. It's just, that's their process.
And are they going to be able to lay fiber in this backbone through served areas in order to get to unserved areas like you are going to have to do?
Yes, ma'am. The nature of power lines and the way they run require that. So they will be running, as, as one example, we cover sections of 250 West out toward the very western portion of the county. Portions of that have good service, but we will be running all the way along 250 to get to the unserved areas in the very western portion. And then there's some a little east of Crozay that are also unserved along 250. So we'll, we'll have fiber all along 250. Some of that will be served areas that we run through just to get to the unserved.
Thank you.
And it's true that way throughout the entire county.
What, what does that timeline look like here? Just ballpark.
That requires construction to be completed within three years of the signatures on the agreements to get started. So they will announce awards in December. If you assume it'll take a couple of months to get those documents in place, spring of 2022, and you've got to be finished by spring of 2025.
Will you include the longer drop lines in that BADI grant for people with really long driveways?
That is a great question, and I meant to touch on that because that came up last week in the discussion with the, the state staff, particularly the folks in the Governor's Office. They expressed frustration when grants are given services available, but it's not really available to people who have long driveways. So they encouraged us to, and said they will be including, encouraging all ISPs who apply for BADI grants this year to build in the extra cost for serving everyone all the way to the house.
Great.
And just make that part of the project.
Okay, great. And your take rate, so your take rate, you're expecting to be pretty high because there's only going to be that connection cost. I mean, that, you know, you're going to take it all the way to the house, so.
Right. We, so that doesn't mean we'll run to every house if they don't apply for service. But every person, every home that does apply will run all the way to the home. But we, when we started our project in 2017 with the feasibility study on the CVEC lines, we anticipated 35% take rate within the first two years of availability. We were doing better than that, and then COVID happened. And now it's much better. So we are typically seeing over 50% take rates when we first move into an area. And we've had areas in Albemarle County where we've exceeded 70% take rate. So we, we will build, I think we will build our case this summer on a 50% take rate. We normally use for financial break even, we normally assume that at 60% take rate, we'll reach break even. That's our number for the, because we run thin margins. And that means we have to hit 60% to reach break even. But, but that's the basis for our, our business model.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for Gary and his team?
I will hold my other 30 questions. It's a little excessive.
I don't know, they're here, they're ready to go.
No, I really, I really appreciate your comment here. And I want to emphasize, like, this is a big deal. This is the first time that there is a future, a near future we can envision in which we don't need a broadband authority, and that's the future I want.
We, we want to see the whole county covered in one VADI grant. Let's put it in, get it done. So we're, we're, we're looking very forward. And you said the timing of your work will be done in the summer, at the end of the summer? Is that what you said in the beginning?
We will be back to you in August. Depending on when your August meeting is.
Okay.
Yes.
Can I?
So we're going to be very busy this summer.
Yeah, boy. Can I ask for a motion to approve ABBA signing the memorandum of understanding?
Enthusiastically moved.
Second.
Second. Let me call the roll and ask for those who are in favor and against. Donna?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Aldo?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes as well. So we'll be executing that and sending it to you guys as soon as possible. Donna, do you have something?
Yeah, I, thank you. I, I put my hands up. Thank you. I, I guess my comment would basically be, you know, be stark. When I heard the word universal, I think that's what we all believe. And I recognize universal may not be absolutely 100%, but, you know, there is a percentage that comes close enough to meet that, that definition. But I think that's what we've all striven for, is to, to reach the capability of any household, any business in the county to have the ability to connect to the internet. And so I think this is exceedingly exciting and really am hopeful that it will come through and come to pass as you've described it. Thank you.
I have one quick question. When you come back in August, will you have a pretty good, you'll, you'll know which one of these houses, like their example of the one up on the parkway, or excuse me, on the Skyline Drive, you'll have all those in front of you, is that correct?
That is my intent. In order to do that, again, we'll need help of the county. And I know Mr. Culp and his staff has done a lot of work in identifying the areas that are unserved. And we're going to reach out to the community and ask them to provide us some information. Particularly, we'll, we'll present a map and say, this is what we know is unserved, and ask anyone outside of those areas to let us know if they do not have access to at least 25.3 consistently and reliably. And then we'll build in those cases into the, the plan. We should be able then to identify the unserved ones that we just can't reach. So we should be able to give you those, depending on getting good information back from the, from the citizens.
Thank you.
Well, I, I couldn't be more excited. I, I am actually jumping up and down, but I'm using a false backdrop, so you can't tell. Folks, thank you all very much. I appreciate your participation to this point. You're welcome to stay on the call if you want, but you got a lot of work to do, and we don't want to keep you from it.
We, we do, and I, I can't tell you enough how much we appreciate the support Albemarle's given us from early on. I, I didn't give you an update on our other build, but I was just looking at White Hall. We had 280 poles to change out, and we've changed out 230. We're down to about 50 left to get ready to build the fiber. We've started into Rid Hill and Skylar as well, areas for the final preparation there. So the CVC side is moving along, and it's moving along faster than we had originally planned because we, we see the need. And it's our intent to keep the foot on the pedal and get everybody else connected as quick as we can. It's still tough, and I understand, Mr. Ragusa, I, I understand everyone that will be in year three of this, who will not be nearly as satisfied as if we were there the first day. But I do believe this is the right answer, to build once, build it right, and solve the problem. And I appreciate your support in doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Well, we should move on to other business. We can't just rest on our laurels here, and let's keep going. Mike, we've got the broadband office and affordability discussion.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the partners from CIVIC and Firefly. Thank you all for joining us. Looking forward to working with you. Anything you need from the new Anything you need from the new broadband office, please let us know, and we'll, we'd glad to help you with anything you need. Uh, just going on to the affordability uh equation, one of the reasons why we decided the, the county board of supervisors and Trevor um did a great job in getting this all set up and straightforward for the board of supervisors to make the decision was the affordability uh challenge. And fortunately, and I think he is still with us, Jason Inaventa, Inaventas. Jason, you can pronounce your word if you want, if your last name, if you want to unmute and introduce yourself to the broadband authority, I would really appreciate if you've got time. Uh, Inafuentes, Mr. Jason, do you have time to talk with us this evening? If not, I understand.
I'm muted now. Hey, ironically, I was having some broadband issues right there.
Perfect time.
Yes, I can um introduce myself. I am Jason Inafuentes. I um have served in various boards and commissions with the county um over the last several years. Live up on Pantops, and um I recently completed my master's in planning at the University of Virginia. Um, and after a brief uh stint in uh the Office of Equity and Inclusion um with Siri Russell, I am excited to work on affordability in broadband with uh the Office of Broadband and Mike.
Yep. Yeah, thanks for that, Jason. Sorry to put you on the spot. We talked about this on Friday, though.
I'm just, I'm in the middle of dinner with the kids, too, so it's a little, it's a little shuffle.
Yeah, and we're, we're all used to that now. We're very uh, very willing to, to work with everybody. So that, that's the key thing that's going on with the affordability. We just need more attention to it, and we're working toward working with our communications and uh public engagement department here at the county to work on a plan to promote not only the new FCC emergency broadband benefit program, which fortunately Firefly is part of. So they are part of the ISP group that is participating in is what is typically called the emergency broadband benefit program. So we want to be one of the premier counties by going out into the community and letting people know that this benefit is available. Likely sometime in May, so we're going to go forward and, and make it available. But we also realize there are a number of other affordability issues going on, so we're working on a number of different things, and we'll present that plan and updates to the broadband authority as that affordability program gets released and we're ready to roll and, and make broadband available with a diversity and equity lens uh paramount. It's important that we understand how to get broadband out to those who typically can't afford it, whether that's in the rural areas or the development areas. We're working on ways to make it more available and more affordable. So we're really excited about that, and that's all I had on that particular topic unless anyone has questions for me or Jason.
Mike, I, I do have a question. Is there, it, it, what are you looking for from the broadband authority uh on, on the topics of affordability specifically? What are you looking for from us? How can we support your efforts?
I think that's a great question, Chair. I think it's going to be part and parcel to our body applications uh with, with the new uh option that, that's coming to play where, you know, the, the twenty twenty-two application looks like it's going to include the cost of those long drops. However, we also want to be premier or at least ahead of the rest of the counties that are involved and uh also include a plan to help offset costs. Now, the E B B, the, the reason that I'm saying this is that by the time uh body twenty twenty-two is awarded, the emergency broadband benefit, unless it becomes the new lifeline program, um, will no longer be there. So it's just an understanding that we're committed to making broadband more affordable. One way to do that is to include those uh extremely long drops and even anything that helps offset the cost to those who have financial uh concerns. Immediately, there are numerous areas in the county which we would appreciate the broadband authority's assistance on if we come up with a program which allows the broadband authority to act as a clearinghouse perhaps, or a grantee or grantor. I mean, um, we may, we may work on a grantor program where people can apply for financial assistance through the broadband authority to help set current long drop costs. So there's the potential that a program such as this may be available. That's a longer discussion, I realize, but it's certainly something that we would like to discuss.
So I would like to get an update from our learned counsel on our ability to grant funds before I uh said we could pursue that.
Um, as of right now, we, we don't have the ability just to straight out issue grants, but our charge of course is to um for lack of a better term, is to develop universal broadband networks. And uh I think I'd have to look a little more closely to see, um, perhaps if we're looking at uh a, a form of a grant program to hook up individual uh individual residences or um or uh community members. It might be that that fits in with the, with the charge of the broadband authority.
And it also sounds like we're, we're going to want to uh update our strategic plan uh in this topic area uh where it, we need to put a little more meat on those bones.
And I will also add that um even if, even if we are permitted to do that, it does present some procurement issues that we just have to address. They may be small purchases and, and don't raise too much of an issue, but we can look at that.
Yeah, we want to make sure we, we don't, we don't delay overlong, but we want to be deliberate and, and proper in our execution in this area.
So um the list of things that may be covered under this affordability um umbrella, who develops that? Is it equipment? Is it a connection? Is it continued um cost of monthly service? All those kinds of, of things. What does?
You mean those pesky little details?
All those pesky little details. Um, who is coming up with the list of the pesky little details? Is that the broadband authority? Is that your office, Mike? Um, how's that going to work?
Yes, I can answer that in an affirmative way. It's the broadband accessibility and affordability office. So it is the new office. One of their main goals is to come up with those reasons. Once again, I, I have to point out that with, the great thing about having the office in place, May first, is that it will have the flexibility to work within the county confines, meaning what are the county rules for procurement, et cetera, as well as working with the broadband authority. So one of the benefits is, you know, there's two options there. We can work within the county procurement rules, or we can work within the, the broadband authority. That's something that Jason and I have to work on. You know, there's, there's current financial assistance programs that are put into place for county residents that we may be able to leverage. So there may be a way that the county can do direct grants to issuing uh agencies uh so that an application for funding, although it does come in, is looked through by the broadband for uh accessibility and affordability office. Um, it eventually be, it is, it is, it is eventually granted by an outside agency. So we are working on ways to sort of make that sort of one-time um funding uh to a nonprofit who then acts as the grantor uh for individual citizen needs or community member needs. Does that answer the question? Yes.
Between the work already done by the county i- in this general area, not broadband, but in areas of need, particularly the work already done by the schools, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, and if there's some way to make it easier for folks to do some one-stop shopping uh in that regard, I, I think that would be a real bonus for everybody. So I, I would uh o- offer that we need to learn from what we're already doing in this county and then try and uh amalgamate those things together to make a cohesive offering that also includes broadband.
I appreciate that comment, Bucky, um, and certainly you can expect over the summer, one of the things that we're going to be doing is s- looking at how the school has managed this, um, and also looking at uh in particular at the E B B program as a model for eligibility criteria. That program has some pretty narrow, narrowly defined uh eligibility criteria that kind of explode out when you start to try to apply them to a population. And so looking at how it's designed, um, serving somewhat as that bridge to connect people um with eligible providers and help shepherd them through the application process. I think that in particular is going to give us an opportunity to learn a lot about how these systems work um and plan for future um county-led initiatives.
Well said. Any other questions from uh Mike or Jason on this topic?
No question. Just Mike jumped right in and, and it's um, I wanted to just note that uh, you know, the press release that go out on Friday, formal um movement of, of Mike into the director of broadband uh is, is, is underway, effective one May. Uh, we have our um current deputy uh of our information technology department, John Wells, will step in in an, in an acting role for uh for, for that position, and we'll bridge until we can recruit and replace. And then Mike will be uh actually moving up on to the second floor so that by here is him, and but, you know, bouncing his head against the wall, I can actually come over and, and check on him so I can uh, can help him out. But I'm really excited about um uh, you know, where we are on this program and the work that's ahead of us. And Aldo, I agree, hopefully, you know, three, four years from now, the, the authority can stand down, and now we're just managing broadband through our program office. Would be a great place to be. So thank you for uh all the, the support from this uh, this group and especially the board of supervisors for uh making this happen. And then Mike, you know, just thank you again for your willingness to, to, to change your hats. I really appreciate that for uh, for this group and for our community.
Thank you, Trevor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Trevor. Well, moving on, the last item on the agenda, the new business uh body twenty twenty-two guidelines and next steps. They've uh, they've stacked the deck in lots of different ways here for lots of different objectives and changed a bunch of things around. Mike, you want to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just reminding the broadband authority that uh input session is now open. So public comment for the body twenty twenty-two guidelines is open. They have a forum that's available, so you're welcome to put your comments in, or if you provide them to me, to me, I will gladly put them in as well. Uh, tomorrow, there's the first of two sessions where they're going to take public input during a two-hour session. So I'm signed up for that. That's tomorrow. Uh, there's also one on May fourth. Uh, I think I'll attend both because when I attended both last year, there were different topics that came up during the meeting. So there's, there's definitely value in being uh in both. So that twenty-five-three i- is an ongoing concern for me, and I think uh Mr. Wood brought it up as well. Um, it's certainly um something that I think will be discussed. There are a number of other items. The R D U F universal broadband is a positive for us. I just want to make sure that there's clarity in that when we submit for body with an R D U F tent, meaning we're, we're including R D U F uh areas. Does that uh mean that all of the areas that we're bidding on also have to be R D U F? So if we're doing a combined application with Louisa, for instance, or Green or whomever, do all of the R D U F areas in those counties also need to be included in our application? So I think there's going to be some regional discussion that will be very interesting as it stands with, with what R D U F awards impact on body twenty twenty-two. So more on that later. Very detailed conversations will likely happen on that. So then the public comment period ends on May seventeenth, and then the final guidelines will be out June fourth. Uh, so then applications will open on June seventeenth. The next big day deadline that we have to be aware of is July twenty-seventh. So back to Mr. Wood's comments, um, my goal is to, to work with Seavik, Firefly, and other potential ISPs a- and make sure that on July twenty-seventh, we have more than just here are our areas. I would like to be able to, you know, even target it down to the address level. Now, that's a lofty goal, but it would be very beneficial if we knew by July twenty-seventh almost to the address level what areas we're going to be submitting. That's the service that I would like to provide to our community members. So during that July twenty-seventh timeframe, if you're with me, then people who are interested and will make this available can come in and say, well, my address isn't included. We're going to do all we can to identify all the addresses we need. And based on the, the Firefly, Seavik uh M O U that we're signing, one of our goals is to make sure that we have all of the, what we view as unserved uh addresses. So that's something that John Noreen will, will work with me on. So that's the big deadline, July twenty-seventh. Then the next one is September fourteenth, and we mentioned that. That's when the applications are due. Uh, so it's, it's around the corner. A lot of work ahead, exciting work, and uh looking forward to, to making body twenty twenty-two reality for the broadband authority in Albemarle County. So thanks for the time today to talk about it, and any questions from the broadband authority?
Well, I have, I have two things, Mike. One, I, I would ask members of the broadband authority who uh take the time to review the body twenty twenty-two guidelines um with regard to public comment, I, I think it might be useful if we sent all of our comments to Mike, who could aggregate them and emphasize them and then send them in uh accordingly to the good folks at D H C D. Of course, as a member of the public, you can do what you feel is right, but I think that would be a, a better way to go so we um can get the emphasis of what the broadband authority thinks. Uh, the second item is uh with regard to uh September submission date. I think it would be useful at our next meeting, uh the May uh meeting, uh to see if we want to put on the calendar a, a date for the broadband authority to meet prior to that meeting to approve uh our final submission at that time. Historically, we've, we've tended to need one, and we don't seem, you know, it's likely that we won't be ready two or three or four or five weeks in advance. So uh I think it would be good to at least put a placeholder on the calendar at that time uh for a potential September, early September meeting. So that, that was, those are my two thoughts. Anyone else for Mike? No? Very uh, Liz, are you talking? Yeah, go ahead.
I, I was gonna just um mention that the, at the end of the meeting as a, as an afterthought, and I've already talked to Mike about this, but I thought that since we're talking about the next body grant to go in, that I ought to mention this. I wanted to tell the whole um broadband authority board. That um I had a um interesting opportunity um Monday a week ago to talk with um Evan Feinman and um, and uh Kyle Rosner. And one of the things that uh they said was very clear that body grants that included the whole county or the whole planning district is what was going to get the most points and was most likely to get approved. And they were very clear about that that's what they wanted. And so what um Gary Wood has presented to us is, is right up the alley of what, what we're looking for. And everybody sort of knows that, but I just wanted to say that I had that conversation and that they very clearly and directly said, we don't want to see anything little. We want to see the whole picture covered. Um, and I did actually have a lot of questions with them about the long line drops at that point. And they did, um, as they told Mr. Wood, it's very clear that they want those line drops added into the, into the grants. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Anybody else? All right, Mike. Thank you very much. Is, is there any other business that uh or any other comments that anyone on the board wants to make at this time? Because we've exhausted our agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do just a, a question for the, the authority and, and for Mike, really. Now that we are starting up the broadband um office uh here effectively next month, should we add a recurring agenda item, which could be a program office update, which kind of is, is a summary of, of activities? You know, and, and it could be in a, in a recurring nature or just some, I think there'll be a lot of work that'll be happening. It would be good to, to just. I think there'll be a lot of work that'll be happening. It would be good to, to just keep the authority informed of that. It could be a, I don't want to create work for you, Mike. I'm throwing this out without talking to you.
Okay, that's fine.
But, but just based on some of the questions and, and the work that'll be happening kind of in parallel, informing, in some cases, you know, we'll want the authority to weigh in on. It might be good just to kind of have some simple update that we do on a monthly basis.
I suspect in general, that's going to overlap pretty strongly with the long list of old business items we have, too, probably be the same folks, so perhaps it could be something we add in at the beginning of that section and just, you know, once Mike gets the ball, he runs with it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Can do.
It's safe to say that if it's not on the agenda, it will be asked about, so.
Fair point. That's a good idea, Trevor. Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anything else? Looks like we're in good shape then. What a great meeting. Thank you, guys, very much. Might there be a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I was hoping we'd just stay in the meeting for a second. Signified by a hand raise. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you all very much. Great day.
Thanks, folks.
Bye-bye.
Aye.